We are. As normal, uh, would please take role, Klein?
Here.
Hi Nick.
Here.
Pujol.
Here.
Raider.
Here.
Stay.
Here.
Uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, second.
Second by Mike, others in favor?
Uh, yeah.
Anyone opposed? All right, public comment, this would be, um, keep in mind, there is a public hearing, number eight. Uh, so if you want to talk about number eight, we'll get to that when we get down there, otherwise, if anyone, uh, from the public would like to say? All right, let's move on to consent agenda. Uh, do we need to be aware of anything special?
No, nothing changed on any of them.
I've got a question on one of the claims. There's been one that we paid to H R Green, uh, for, uh, a little 11,000. My question, is that part of the, I know we got, we got the, uh, the sewer, it says sewer project, and we've got a, uh, contract with them for the whole sewer thing, but over seven hundred, 745,000. Is that eleven part of that, or is that an addition to it?
Um, part of it, I think it was like 10,000 some odd dollars was the sewer project. And 500 was just general, um, questions, comments, reviews.
You combine them together?
Well, you're only getting one check. It's two separate invoices.
It's two different invoices.
Yeah, it's two separate invoices.
But that's really part of the large contract we have with you, right?
Well, you have the sewer project, which is what she's saying is 10,000, then we have just a general home and call contract where if something comes in, like this Swisher 60, the development, things like that, that puts under our contract, so there was what, 500 dollars?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, is that part of that extra contingency where, uh, I think the contract was over three million, but we borrowed about 4.3 or something like that? There's about 1.2 in additions to the contract for the sewer, is that a part of that 1.2 million contingency?
Not the 500 dollars, no.
No, he's talking about, or you're talking about like the 700 itself, right?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about the sewer project itself.
Okay.
Was, uh, we bid for a little over 3 million, 3.4 or something like that, I think?
Okay.
370.
Engineering costs would have been factored into our budget for the project.
Okay. But, uh, we're borrowing about 1.2 million over with the, uh, contract, but that 1.2 is, is for?
Engineering.
For, uh, could it?
It could be, yeah.
Any contingency.
And any unknowns?
Okay. Nice.
Yep.
Don't worry.
Uh, can I, uh, get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? I'm curious, thank you. Uh, reports, Sheriff, we do have the enforcement thing, we can work with that in a second, anything else we need to be aware of?
No.
Awesome.
Looked for a black sport bike, just ran across, I guess.
A what?
Black motorcycle, just ran down Swisher, he's driving across.
Yeah, I saw him down lane three, uh, uh.
Coming down the vision?
He was coming back up that lane, so.
He was on his sixty-five.
Coming north, yeah.
I just do have a question.
We still have the intersection.
I know the utility vehicles are quite organs, are a lot on city streets, are like mods and other UTVs and ATVs.
Okay, okay.
Should I make sure? But not like, um, go cars? Probably less than ever with go cars, that's a totally different thing.
Okay.
Uh, engineer, other than the stuff we'll talk about later?
Yeah, um, we did attend the second council meeting last month, uh, yeah, we've been working on that Boston subdivision stuff. Um, we had pre-cap the sewer project, and we had the ongoing true mobile project that's going. Um, sewer project, they are maybe wanting to get started next week, if everything works out okay. So, and then we've had, uh, some things to look over for that Swisher, uh, 60 subdivision down that corner.
The trip move were the, are they done?
They're getting pretty close to being done, and you talked to the inspector today, this kind of started.
Well, Kevin, I think was here last week, and I think they were, they were, on Friday, had, had to make a call to him or something else, and I think he said they were done.
Good.
Yeah, they're out of time to do, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Uh, Mayor and Council, reports, uh, last week was pretty busy, I attended the League of Cities, um, meeting conference, I guess you could say, and leaders meeting in Des Moines. Uh, met mayors from across the states, uh, league officials, things like that. Um, talking about different things coming up through Des Moines, or a couple of really good bills we're watching, and that would definitely benefit some of the smaller towns, um, so we'll find out later this week if they make it through. Other than that, it was just really nice to get to see other mayors. And then Thursday, I was up at the, uh, school district with all of the mayors that are in the school district. They took us through the new building, that they're remodeling for the ninth grade, it's gonna be very nice. Um, so it's really nice to see where our kids are going to school, where our taxpayer money is being spent. Very, very much wanting to expand their interaction with cities that own this school district, so we're hoping to have more meetings with them throughout the year. Anyone from council have any reports?
Uh, there's.
Awesome, uh, I don't know, you got anything to add, or are you good?
I don't have much more than just what was in the report, I spoke a little too soon about the blower, we anticipated to have that done by this meeting, so I kinda added it in the report, but we had it all wrapped up, the wiring's a little different, maybe get a piece um, for attaching to the motor and a couple of things like that, so hopefully, we got that wrapped up this week. We're gonna have the UV in by the end of the week, and that's just the normal season, we run UV March 15th through November 15th, so we'll have that all installed and ready to go. Um, chlorides are back down, we're having some problems there for the last couple of months with chloride, and I think primarily it's because of how dry it was, but after we got a bunch of snow and snow melt and and we've got some rain, we've got some ionized, all the chlorides are back down below where we need them to be, so. That's basically it, with the UV, when we fire it back up for the season, we're gonna kind of particularly take note of bulbs, and kind of see where we're at. I know we have some bulbs on site to replace a few, but we're probably gonna need to buy some bulbs, I would guess. Maybe, we'll probably get through this season, we'll probably need to anticipate some bulbs for next season, so we'll kind of get a handle on that, but that's the gist, so.
Sounds good.
Questions for me?
Awesome, thank you. All right.
Is there, or before we get into this, is there a reason that we do not have a, a public works report for two months in a row?
I can't, yes, I don't have any.
I didn't know if one's been submitted or not, but, hold on.
Sorry?
What's the part of the contract when he was hired?
I don't know if it was ever specifically stated he had to report every month, or just update us when needed to update, do you remember?
I'm pretty sure it said that the report and attendance at all meetings, and attendance at meetings, so.
Does that mean though, how, how far along we're on the maintenance building? About three months ago, he'd been done in a week and a half.
I guess that something followed him.
Uh, last time I was in there, they had some shelving that they were gonna work on, but it was primarily done.
Which that is one thing to consider, is we did talk back in the winter about having a grand opening type thing in the spring, and now as we're getting in there, we should probably maybe put that on next, uh, meeting, set something up.
Okay. I know Mary was working on, but were you also working on the sign thing?
We were gonna visit it at this time of year, uh, start getting some quotes, I think, um, or however council wanted to take action, I should say. So, I can reach out to my person.
We were gonna get like a nice sign to put on the building, so people knew what it was, something prominent. To kind of have ready to go for another house, so that way. So, seems to be it. Okay, I think Tanya has some stuff on it, if not, uh, Mary would have had it. She was working on it. Okay. So, whatever laid on, we don't need to, we can just check on, if that's due.
Just touch it with the.
Okay.
Should be in, um, we'll talk to you about it.
Other things from council? Right, uh, looking out to seven of law enforcement. Um, we have done this last year on Wednesday nights, working it back to talk about, do we want to continue it this year? What do you want to do? How do you want to handle it? Uh, we do have the sheriff's here, if we need to.
How are our Wednesday nights going, between? What's that?
We can't handle it, we can't, no, not a chance. I mean, it's every single weekend, I don't remember, or week, I don't remember the last week that we didn't get called there for something stupid, whether you get knocked out, drunk kids all over the place, and.
Coming to this, you say?
Oh, yeah, there's sixteen, seventeen year old kids all overdrunken in that place, yeah.
Another thing to bring up, uh, this doesn't have to do with law enforcement, but I know for a fact, my father-in-law's been going around on Thursday mornings, and he's driving all over town with his thing, picking up solo cups and beer bottles and cans and all over the place, and that's not, that's not the citizen's responsibility at all. And it's, to me, in my personal opinion, I think it's wrong, the city has to pay for extra patrol, I think we need it, but I don't think we should have to pay for it, that's my personal opinion. Because that'd be just like if Tanya's bar was having all kinds of problems, what are we gonna do? Pay for her to have extra patrol on Friday nights when the bars get rowdy? I.
There's something else to be, but I was up here this last Wednesday with Sergeant Hans, and I believe that we had eighty percent of our people that were working over here because of Dancemore, because of the calls that were coming in, so was that due to the rest of the county as well?
Exactly, and the thing about it is, all this, all these problems that are getting stemmed from that Dancemore on Wednesday nights, is not citizens at Swisher that pay taxes to this town. It's not. I'm, I guarantee Cody and out of a million, every other swinging person in this town is not going up to that place.
Right.
It's just unbelievable that we think the taxpayers should have to pay for extra patrol for a business that we're not causing the problems with.
Is the biggest issue, you think, alcohol?
Yes. It's mostly underage alcohol, I mean, we can, we can travel.
So, are you guys writing a lot of citations for that?
I did, last week, we wrote one, but I mean, it was a seventeen, sixteen year old girl, we have to stay with her until her mom can come and pick her up, she came from West Branch. So, I mean, it, it was a two hour ordeal to write one real citation, we're trying to round out other people as well, but, I mean, it's just overwhelming for us.
There was a month ago, I was driving through town on Wednesday night, and there was a car that was hung up on the railroad tracks, and they had like two or three other sets of cars trying to get, trying to pull it off the railroad tracks.
Yeah, I think last week alone, we had, not O D B I reps, but, um, every week we tested someone that had alcohol in their system, there's four of them just, just coming from Dancemore.
This, so you're sure that the alcohol that was being consumed at Dancemore and also carried out of there, or is it actually alcohol they're bringing in here?
Both, so the one we wrote last week was, um, a girl that was having somebody over 21 buy alcohol, and they give it to the, the sixteen year old, seventeen year old, whatever she was. Most of the kids, though, they just keep a bunch of alcohol in their car, or they chug as much as they can when they go back to their car, then they scoot in the back door. Um, I think really the only way to stop it is have one of their staff at the door, if they suspect one of these kids is impaired, say, hey, you're not coming in my establishment, what they're doing right now is they're just basically creating a place for all these kids to come and get messed up. And they're leaving, they're leaving impaired, driving, um, there's an accident, I'm sure you guys are all there, that didn't come from, uh, Dancemore, but, I mean, it's in the area. A lot of these same kids that are at Dancemore, they had that, that bad accident the other day, so.
So legally, I guess, what can the city do?
Do they have a liquor license?
Yes.
Um, well, if they're serving underage people, you sign them, and their liquor licenses can get pulled at some point in time.
The council signs, we can't sign, don't.
No, at least they have to sign.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But, but you would have to catch them serving underage.
Yes, or allowing them into their establishment if they're drunk, though, too.
Right, but I'm, but I'm just saying you'd have to catch them in that.
But is their license expired?
It just got renewed, what do you remember, October and November?
Is it a year?
Yeah.
The other thing you do is maybe call the proprietors and have a discussion with them and say, look guys, we've got some real problems you need to address, and you need to hire your own security. Maybe you check if people would come in an hour, you know, and mayor, this has come from you, and you could say, I don't know if council's gonna renew your liquor license.
On, on Swisher fund days, when, um, Tanya runs the, or not, Sonia runs the Swisher fund days, she pays for extra patrol?
Correct, yes. Well, the fund days committee, not sign, I mean, she was.
She's pretty much the.
But, there's a clear.
Did we establish last year because we wanted the reserves to be in town, not in their building that the city pays for?
That was up here for now, yeah. Has it ever been addressed with Dancemore to say, hey, if you guys want to continue this craziness, you need to hire a reserve?
Yeah.
So, I mean, like, places like.
The owner of it was on council, but.
Yeah.
So, she was, um, so, yeah, they did know that?
Cause I mean, if we have like weddings that provide alcohol, like, like at El Salada in Tiffin, they have, they hire reserves all the time, so.
Is that the La Salas rule, or the city's rule?
I don't know.
I would suggest we call the, invite them to next meeting, we have it already here.
Uh, let me talk to them first.
Well, they, they gotta know what's going on there, too.
Right, but we need to give the proprietors a chance to do their thing before we all jump on them.
Oh, why don't you jump on, just discuss with them?
In the meantime.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, what goes on on Wednesday nights at Dancemore?
It's line dancing, and they have all high schoolers and.
Sixteen to twenty-one year olds. Okay. Probably eighty to ninety percent of the.
Hundreds, probably three hundred kids in everyone's, wow, yeah, you can't find a parking spot for three blocks.
Yeah.
Maybe the city ought to charge a, a fee to come into town Wednesday night, increase your revenue, so, right? Ten bucks, ten bucks a person, that's three here in a week, right?
Yeah.
Well, I wonder if Obama could charge you a fee.
Then hired, then hired.
Yeah. I don't know, if they do, okay.
As I said, you know, another option, I don't know what you can do, but you could have them give a breakdown of how much money they're spending in alcohol sales alone. And if it's a certain amount, or the council, whatever you decide, let's say it's eighty percent of their income comes from alcohol, I think that would be enough to say, okay, you can't let somebody under 21, and you're not, this is primarily a bar, right?
We would have to make that an ordinance, wouldn't we?
I don't, I don't remember what our ordinance is, but if it doesn't say that, we would.
Isn't there something already?
Just went over this.
Or like after eight o'clock, you can't have.
Yeah, they, they cleared out at ten, is what I'm only doing.
Yeah, but I mean, I think, I was thinking at one point that, uh, like with militias and stuff, although it was, you couldn't, you couldn't have kids in there under eighteen hours.
I always thought that was a first discretion on that, but we did just have the, we just brought our code up to the state code regarding this. Because Sonia was in here because she was worried about that, because she doesn't have such a percentage of food sales. I forgot, whatever.
But isn't it after ten o'clock?
I'm pretty sure that's.
Doesn't.
And I think that's why they, they've cleared all them out at ten, yeah.
Yeah.
If they're, the, the bulk of their revenue is alcohol sales, and if they can't control it, and council doesn't renew their liquor license, that's kind of a problem, you know?
Well, I think, I think then they just have it dance and don't serve alcohol, and the kids are still gonna come in with the booze from the car.
Yeah, I think, I, yeah, I agree, I don't think that's gonna solve the problem.
I don't think most of them that's causing the problem, they're all in for buy off, or anyway.
I think they're drunk when they come in, they're alive, they're doing like what?
Session with her.
Well, they, they come in, and they become, they shut down, you can't leave until you're gone, can't come back.
No in and out privileges, yeah, I mean, plenty of places like that.
Well, and I even did the, like, back in high school, I guess it was a while ago, but they'd be at the door with a breathalyzer, PBT, and said, hey, there's a underage event, blow into this, if you register any alcohol, turn away. But then again, you have a bunch of intoxicated kids now leaving your establishment on your property that
might not be there.
You might not know how they got there, they could be getting behind the wheel, so it's, it's just a mess either way you look at it.
Let's definitely figure out the technical order and see if there is a percentage council needs to be aware of. Uh, there's a local extension, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was a couple meetings ago, we brought our playbook up to the state code regarding this, we just have to look back on that. Uh, but I think for the meantime, uh, whether or not we feel that the Dancemore should pay for it, I think we have to do our due diligence to ensure safety, so I think for the time being, you know, until we have that communication, or if it's a meeting in two weeks or a month, we need to have the extra reserves in town.
Do you want to set a timeframe that we revisit it, that gives us time to talk with Dancemore to do the research?
Four weeks, so it's pretty.
To the first meeting.
Yeah, and then by, within a month, they can actually give us, then, you know, data on this, on, you know, after probably two weeks of it, is it gonna curve way down to where it's manageable again?
Right. Yeah, and we can pull the statistics, or get all the data on, like, how many calls we've had there, how many man out we had there.
I think that's what they saw last year, was after like those two weeks of, oh crap, there's more cops and down, the incidents went way down, yeah.
Do you charge a fee for each person that comes in? Which is a, I don't know, nobody at Swisher goes there.
I'm not, I'm sure there's some, there's a very young crowd.
Walk over there, but it's not, really don't still go.
I was hoping you were gonna ask me to go there, it's on a Wednesday night, but. Say you fly. Okay, but I'm walking behind you.
Cody, are you making a motion?
Five bucks, he said.
Uh, do we have to have a motion for that? For.
For just to manage it all, don't we?
Just for the next month, I have.
I mean, we're already active in the budget, right? I mean, it's already, it's already been budgeted.
Thirty, the budget.
So, then, we know that, thanks. Okay, uh, so then, first meeting in April, we definitely want to revisit and try to see what we can find out with Dancemore and all the laws and things.
Okay.
But whatever data you can bring to that meeting is definitely gonna help us.
Okay.
But you still gotta have additional officers with the, on Wednesday nights, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if you guys approve it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, we just did, so we're, we're doing it for the next four weeks.
And we try to have, um, governor's traffic safety grant cars, like last week, we had one up that they're specifically looking for traffic stuff, drunk drivers, things like that. So, we try to send them up here if they're working on Wednesdays as well.
Sure.
So, kind of helps the people on the road.
Do you need anything else from us?
Should we? Um, do you want us to send that data prior to the?
Yeah, we can have it by the Friday before that meeting, that's when she makes the package, put it in there, council can review it over the weekend, be ready with the questions.
Okay.
And then you're gonna reach out to the others?
Yeah, yeah, we'll start to get them involved as well.
Sounds good. Anything else for us?
Anything else for the sheriffs?
Thank you.
We're good, if you want to go.
Thanks.
Unless you wanna hang out.
We're gonna look for that motorcycle.
Good luck, bro, bye now.
Have a good night.
Good.
All right, number eight, this is the public hearing for the development agreement with Forest Ridge LLC. Uh, proposed per year old's first edition subdivision, we can locate it, it was in Swisher City Limits, this is the one in the northwest corner of town. Uh, can I get a motion to open public hearing?
Motion, select.
Thank you. All of you are opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, the council will speak on the next one, but is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak at six fifty five? All right, thirty seconds per minute, so be nicer, is there anyone online, let's talk about it? Did you get any written?
No, I'm sorry, no, there were no written comments, uh, it was published, let's see the office gazette, it was around, I don't know, it's. Been on the website.
All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, close public hearing.
That's right, second?
Second.
Thanks Cody, all those in favor of closing the public hearings?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Close at six fifty six. All right, council, uh, reviewing the agreements, um, there are a couple, uh, word adjustments, and there was an addition that actually wanted, uh, what questions do you have?
Mayor, if I may interrupt, um, our agenda says Prairie Hills, our agreement says Pleasant Hills.
Yeah.
Is it Pleasant Hills or Prairie Hills?
I think it's Pleasant.
I think it's Pleasant.
It's Pleasant.
Yeah.
I don't think it makes a, I don't think it's a problem for a public hearing, just scrivener's error, we'll call it that, and then just make sure that the record replies that we were talking about, Pleasant Hills, not Prairie. Doesn't change the language of the agreement, other than just the agenda.
Council have questions?
We're gonna do a TIF, look at it in the TIF, is that correct?
Yeah, that's separate though.
How many years is that for?
Ten.
Ten years?
With the potential to extend, but you extend later, you don't extend it.
Now, the TIF money, it comes, basically, uh, half the money received comes from what the school normally gets, the TIF.
No, TIF, the way it affects schools is not like the property tax, it's, it's a different type of money.
Where, okay, how much, how much is, cause I, my property was in TIF several years ago, and half went to the school, come to the city, and the city got their share, has it changed now, you know, on that TIF?
That's a question for the bonding mechanic, I, I have no idea.
Okay, so, how much is a TIF money, don't you?
Well, I.
It's normally, it's normally with the school requests, give or take, it's not exact, give or take.
And it's, and it's not including any, any bond that they might have, that's, that's what taken off.
And when we get to the TIF portion, which is not tonight, we can have a bonding agent answer all the questions for you, because again, tonight is not about TIF.
Well, I, here's my question, well, because it, uh, is referring to the payment and of the urban development area, which assumes would be the TIF.
Proposed.
Proposed, yes, okay. How do we, how do we pay the developers, he's looking at, uh, getting, getting the TIF, getting the TIF money. Okay, what percent of the TIF money is he getting? Have we reset it?
Yeah, yeah, we were at the meeting, right?
Yeah. The percentage of our TIF, of our whole TIF money.
We talked.
You could look at the, I guess, to see like, what, a hundred or 1.4 million of the what, I mean, do that.
That's, that was a lot, I know that.
Yeah, I know, but what I'm saying is, look at the total revenue projected, and, I mean, he wants 1.4, I mean, you could calculate the percentage off of it.
Okay, my, my question is, if we're getting the TIF for ten years, and the lots aren't all finished, what happens then?
He don't get it.
It doesn't.
He don't get it.
So, like, if you only had a hundred lots developed in ten years, you'd only get a hundred, or one million dollars.
No, this first TIF is only the first forty.
Yeah, it's only the first forty, this is.
That's the first phase.
First phase, yeah, cause then when he goes to phase two, we'll put that in.
It's gotta be all redone again, we gotta agree on phase two and three.
Okay, so my question, with the TIF money, our taxes come in, okay, we, we, we get so much, we're on the treasure, right? For the city, on taxes. For, for the city, on taxes.
TIF, not property, but it's different.
That's off the property, isn't it, that we're getting?
It's the taxes, property taxes, not the center.
Yeah, I know that, but the TIF is property tax that used to go to the school, it used to be, has it changed?
TIF, TIF is, TIF is the increment, it's, it's the difference between what the value is now versus what the value is going to be. That, that's the difference, so the school is not losing out on what they're getting right now. Does that make sense?
The state backfills it, right?
And.
The, the state backfills, what, what should go to the school?
And, and I think, and I'm going strictly by memory from that meeting we had over there, is, I think, doesn't the city rep realize like a six million dollar uh, benefit, just to you guys, over the course of this?
Yes, it was like seven point two, I think, and then one point four went to the developer, so we're left with five point eight. And two point nine is ours to do whatever, and two point nine theoretically would be in that LMI.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, you received a letter of support from the school to do this, right?
Yes.
But, uh, as the lots finished, we're going to start paying developer for that lot once completed, right?
Or maybe when we get our tax money.
When we do.
About two years after it's completed, for any money comes in, no, roughly about two years.
Yeah.
So they, they don't expect any money for two years, is that correct?
You're not cutting an upfront check.
Are you?
You're not cutting any upfront check, which is a good arrangement to have.
That's why I want to go for you.
If it's coming in, he gets rights to some of it, but, but nothing comes in.
It isn't like, it isn't like he's saying, we're putting in forty houses, next year we have to cut them off four hundred thousand dollars.
If he doesn't put in any house, we don't.
Yeah, I, I know that, but my question, it doesn't specifically say, but when he completes one, we don't owe any, any, any money until the money comes in.
Correct.
So the city gets their tax.
That's how the TIF, the TIF agreement.
It doesn't, it doesn't clarify it here, though, huh?
It will not say it in there, because that is in the TIF agreement, which is a totally different document, which we will talk about on a different day, it does not need to say it in there.
But I just want, if you owe us ten thousand dollars a lot, I just want to make sure that we don't have to pay it until sometime, the money actually comes in.
Because that's in the TIF agreement.
Developed, once it's developed.
Yeah, yeah.
Only that's why there's a whole second document.
If the lot is, if the lot is developed.
If the lot is developed, right.
Yeah, but I, my question is, I want to make sure that we don't have to pay it once it's developed. We gotta, we gotta keep, how do we keep track of the lots, if the money's coming in, we still vary?
The county assessor puts a base value.
Can they do that? Okay.
The county assessor puts a base value on it, and then, I mean, I've done these in the past, I check every, every year what the, what the new assessed value is going to be come January first. And then you redo, you take off all of, like I just said, the, any bond that the schools have, I mean, not, not, they, they collect their tax on all of those. Um, and then, yeah, the incremental value is the difference, but also checking to make sure the tax has been paid to the city, the county, the, all the other taxes.
Okay, I just want, because it, it really does, it didn't specify how.
Again, again, because that, this is not the TIF agreement.
Yeah. This is, this is. I just want to make sure that developers, they're making reference in the payments, I just want to make sure.
And Darryl's talking about paragraph thirteen, and Shelley had a good idea by adding the word develop, I would recommend it to go between per and lot, make it per developed lot.
And that's, that's the way it's written in front of the council.
Okay, I had to see what, I didn't, yeah.
It was in the packet, oh, I'm sorry.
You, you said it to me, but I didn't, I, I didn't, I didn't look at it, I just want to make sure that, that that's, because you had, you had sent the email, I totally agree, it was a good suggestion. And I don't have any problems with the remaining, or the other revisions that Mr. Ralston requested.
Yeah, I think he had delivered one Friday, yeah, so I think it was a reassessment.
I don't know what.
Yeah, I was fine with that, okay, I was going to email today, said I think what the other changes we can, we can let those.
What, what time, at what point do they deed the, the streets? Initially, apparently the homeowner is going to have, uh, the streets, at what point do they deed that to the city, who determines that?
What happens is, they will, once they commence construction on a phase.
Okay.
They have one year to finish it, if they don't finish it, then they have to provide a performance bond that says they'll finish it within the next year, or else the city can take that bond and complete the, the improvements. Now, um, they can do, go to a final plat for each phase before the improvements are done, if they choose to post that performance bond anyway, okay? If they wanted to complete the improvements in that year, they could go to final plat and not have to do a performance bond. Now, in order for the, for the final, for, for everything, you to take it over, what we do is, we inspect it as it's going in, at the end, we look at all the final paperwork and everything, and if it meets the city codes and standards, then what we do then is recommend to council to accept it.
That's all part of your.
We will do that.
We'll be sure of that, right?
Okay, we will do that.
Other questions from council? Uh, we will need a motion.
Motion to accept.
The draft of the developer grant?
With the proposal.
With the proposal changes.
Second.
I need a roll call please.
Klein.
Aye.
Heineck?
Aye.
Pujol?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Steg?
Aye.
I see that motion carried. Um, moving on to ten, resolution twenty of twenty twenty four, consideration for grouping development agreement with Forest Ridge. Didn't we just do that? Does that, didn't you just approve that?
We essentially accepted the draft, I think, in nine, but, but, that's why I was confused while we were doing the roll call.
Okay, yeah, I thought you were approving the resolution.
I, that's where I was confused if we needed a motion or not on nine, because I didn't think we did.
Not on nine, just to review something.
That's what I thought.
Or you're, it was going to be about two of them. I've got, I've got Cody making a motion and Adam to approve resolution twenty twenty four.
On ten.
Yeah, on ten, and then a roll call of everyone approving.
But this resolution specifies Prairie Hills.
It, it, it will be, it can be changed, yep, yep, with, with amendments.
So eleven, for the resolution twenty one of twenty twenty four, consideration, authorizing improving of law enforcement, providing the issuance of the four hundred forty seven thousand dollar obligation water system group note. And providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. This is the.
Yep, this is proceedings from our bonding attorney, Dorsey and Witten, Des Moines, um, again, this is ready, I think it's ready to close. Is this one next week, or is this one, this is the twenty sixth? And it's, this is the local, um, water arm, the local rank.
Motion to approve resolution twenty one, twenty eight, twenty four, second.
Just took my mic. I need a roll call please. Heineck?
Nay.
Pujol?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Steg?
Aye.
Klein?
Nay.
That motion passes, thank you. Uh, resolution, uh, twenty two, consideration, amending the service agreement with each agreement for the preparation of tree removal quote documents for the twenty twenty two sanitary sewer projects. Anything you need to know?
Uh, just, um, it, it wasn't in our contract to separate the tree removals originally mounted to their own bid set and creating specs like that, a year ago, we did it once, and I thought maybe we could try to absorb that into our contract. Um, we just weren't able to do it again, you know, like we just did change, so we're just looking to get reimbursed for, for doing that.
Questions from council?
Big motion approved?
Second.
I need a roll call please. Pujol?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Steg?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Heineck?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, thirteen is ordinance, uh, three, consideration of the first reading, amending city code chapter twenty one point oh one, cleaning zone admission by reducing the number of members from seven to five. So this is what we talked about last time, right? For bringing in some, correct?
Motion to approve, second.
Can I get a roll call please? Roder?
Aye.
Steg?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Heineck?
Aye.
Pujol?
Aye.
Thank you, and motion carries. Uh, fourteen, city department of lawn care bids, review the bid documents and approve post being noticed to start funding bids. I did have a question. Uh, do you or the library have problems with ants at all, do you know?
I don't know. I would say they do.
Just because I know a lot of the lawn care companies will also spray the building in extra, if you have problems.
Okay.
Just because my house does.
Well, I can, we can do that separately, or I can ask. We'll keep it under the bid for now.
Uh, does council have any questions or changes, anything you want to see on the lawn care bid that isn't on there?
Is this anything that our, uh, city guys can handle?
No, you have to, um, license to spray, you have to have some, something special to be able to spray these chemicals, and our guys don't have it.
It costs twenty dollars to get it, and it's like, um, a hundred dollars, I think. It's not that hard.
I get it, what a hundred dollar, you'll be.
Yeah, you take the course, or you take, they give you a book, you study, and then you take the test at Kirkwood, I was licensed for like five years. Yeah, it's not hard.
Is this, is this something we could, down the road, encourage or sit again and pursue?
Yeah, we do have stuff in the budget for them to take ongoing treatments.
Should be good.
Wow, so we can talk to them, see if they want to get licensed?
I mean, I mean, I know when we get this bid, it's going to be a lot more than that cost.
Right, well, there's still the cost of the chemicals, so we would have to, our, our bid would not top two, two hundred bucks, so, yeah. Uh, in the meantime, do you guys want to go out to bid for this?
Have we ever done this before?
Yeah, yeah, you did last year.
Did you?
Yep, it was Ace Lawn Care last year.
I thought it was Ace.
Yeah, apparently you do it every year, because Tanya had written me a note to make sure, got it?
Well, he's so good to, uh.
It was once originally.
Quote, quote for lawn treatment, that's what she told me. So, yeah, I just took. I took the bid from last year, um, put it into a bid doc, that's exactly how the bid was last year. Posted those in certificate and assurances, um, put on dates, I, I sent it.
Do you, you recall what it was spent on?
Spent, I don't know for sure, I don't think, um, it was, yeah, I don't have the total spent. The bid was, single application was two thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars, but I'm, I'm positive that the city didn't add, um, spend that total. It was just kind of broken out by those individual applications. Yeah, because not every application happens all at the same time, it was spread out through the season.
I did send this to public, well, I did ask Public Works, you know, about the bid, and, um, I was just told that, well, it's just always Ace, but I know that the council wants to go out for bids, so um, I put this together for you to review and, and consider, and then I did, I, you know, knowing that you wanted more than, more than one bid. Um, so there, there's Ace, C R L Lawn Care, and Shalipski Landscaping that are local, and then, of course, I, you know, I just Googled lawn treatment company, so I mean, do you want me to send to more than just those three, do you want it a certain number?
You probably should do more than three, because a lot of times they don't get a bid back.
Exactly.
It would, it would be nice.
So I have a list of, one, two, three, four, five, six, I have a list of eight with numbers, I mean, I'll just kind of have them if they want.
So you could also give direction to communications to put it up.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, if you wanted. I, I wouldn't think that that needs to come as a direction, that's just something we'll do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there even a motion on this?
I would appreciate that, that you're approving the documents as.
Motion to approve lawn care bid sheet, and posting of.
The application.
Did, sorry about her. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Uh, citywide cleanup date, uh, looking at Saturday, May the fourth, is the garage sale, so it would be the following Saturday. We traditionally do the citywide cleanup right here downtown, um, we've been doing this for quite a few years, residents seem to appreciate it.
Yeah, and I just included the twenty twenty three flyer that I found, so if there is any changes to that, please let me know.
We're just looking at the eleven, you know.
Unless you guys want to do all the different dates.
It looks like last year was just the one date, again, Saturday, May thirteen.
It's nice having it the week after, though, garage sales, and stuff that doesn't get sold, and they want to pitch, they can pitch to you, that always helps for.
And just, yeah, just asking for that, you know, the date to be set, so I know when to contact, was it Johnson County for the dumpster, or whatever they provided last year.
Motion is set, citywide cleanup date for May eleven.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Uh, the last one is, uh, the Johnson County General Justice Youth Board, Youth Development Policy Board. They meet once a quarter, uh, it is a hybrid option, so you don't have to drive all the way into Ida City, but we need somebody to represent. Uh, mostly just sit and listen, and if there's something good going on around the county that the city can benefit from, getting information to communications, so she can give it out to the town. It's just good to know it's there, the county is spending money on for our children, and, and somebody to attend the meeting. Does anyone want to volunteer?
I cannot, with the meeting time, it's very super.
Anyone else? Want to do a mic?
I guess I can, yeah.
Anyone not good with that?
Say three thirty to five, doesn't work for me.
Uh, would somebody like to motion to nominate Mike to be our representative?
Someone would.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion has carried, and Mike is now our representative. So we'll forward to do the email, they don't meet again until May.
They don't meet till May?
Yeah. Um, and once.
I mean, once per month, which Monday?
Uh, it's not once per month, it's once per quarter. Um, so they don't meet again, that's why they don't meet again until May, because they already met in February, so it's.
Oh, okay.
It's the second month of each quarter. We are at the end of our agenda, anyone has anything else, otherwise, motion would be good.
Motion to a different call.
Oh, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I forgot some on our report, it's just really for good and well fair, your S R F loan has been approved, and as of Friday, you can start looking to get some reimbursement from them, so, about time.
Yes.
Um, well, I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
When you said that they're getting ready, they want to get started on this, are they going to start now at this corner?
I think so.
Are they going to just start now by the sewer?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they have to lay from the bottom up.
Because I know you said something about fixing something on this.
He wants to put, or put welts in up there, deep watering wells, so that may come, probably.
Okay, because they're, they're going to have to close the street somewhere and stuff to do.
Ultimately, ultimately.
It's running up the creek line, basically, from the sewer pipe, like we're taking all the trees out, a little line, well, you don't know how much is below that, that's where the.
That's exactly through the.
Yeah, it's coming up kind of the east side of the creek.
Yeah.
When the creek makes its bend, then it's going east and west there. And when it gets to the continued right away at third, or excuse me, Howard down there, excuse me, then the streets are going.
Okay.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned at seven twenty.